...what was happening. A regular scheduled meeting, you can add whatever you want. A emergency meeting, you have the option of adding something because there might be something that was in dire need to be added. But at a special meeting, anything that you discussed in private that you wanted to add tonight needed to be advertised in the meeting. And you also, again, this month, this meeting, the same like the last special meeting, you did not advertise what, not the regular meeting that you had. You did not put on the agenda the items that you were discussing in private, okay? The two councilmen that were just elected ran on transparency. This council since September has been not transparent, okay? You're not telling the public what you want to do and when you're going to do it, okay? Everything is very elusive. So I hope that that changes. It's wrong. I'm not asking for answers. What?
Thank you, Mayor. This has been very secretive since September. We don't get information.
Well, you're not getting information from the public now.
Well, you know, he runs the borough. We talk to the majority. Don't look at us. I'm not on the majority. No, we pay our bill. Tell that to the mayor.
It's time to see how. Please don't argue.
No, I'm taking stadium.
Okay, now, you've always been talking about an agenda committee. So if you have an agenda committee, items that are going to be on the agenda are well known in advance that you can put it on the agenda for the public, all right? This Nova Skiff, you know, discussion regarding pending litigation, discussion regarding capital improvements. I mean, that's so vague, very vague, okay? Now, I want to know when the videos for the meetings will be put on the public, on the Borough website. I know Democrats have the videos on the web that David has taken, but unfortunately, there appears to be a little bit of an edit done on the September 13th video that you cut into two pieces. And my comments would cut out midway. And I think it was the comment that I made regarding Mr. Trubus not voting on the acting administrator's vote. And that was cut out because I said he shouldn't vote on that resolution because he had a conflict. But apparently, that got clipped.
Nothing was cut out. You've never got to report it.
Well, there's two. You have it cut into two pieces. And I'm cut here.
The camera had a limitation on the amount of time recorded that I was unaware of. And nothing was cut. It was just simply not recorded.
And just conveniently was committed to my stage.
You can take whatever you like.
I definitely think it's David.
Do we have your phone? Do I give you the phone?
I don't have it.
If you give it to us, we'll put it on.
I don't have it. September 13th I'm talking about. September 13th.
It happened to happen. You give it to us.
I don't have it. I don't have any stuff from September 13th. Okay, that was under the Borough wall. Okay, that was under the Borough wall. Okay? You know, they were having a meeting in the open air, okay? Also, opers. I have outstanding opers from August, from Ms. Gorges, from Mr. Munch. And I think that the administrator should make sure that the opers are filled. I have outstanding opers from when she was here in August that were promised to meet the September 20th. And I forwarded that to Mr. Munch, and he said it would be done. Then I was promised opers to be filled by October 20th. Well, in two more days, it's going to be September, not November 20th. And they're still not filled, okay? And we're paying the administrator $17,000 a month and paying for Ms. Gorges' increase in salary. I think we should get our opers, okay? They're not from August, September, October, November. Okay? They're all in violation. Excuse me. They're all in violation, all right? Now, we have the capital ordinance on the budget tonight, on the agenda tonight. That has been on the agenda for six months previously, and there would be no, nobody would vote on it. Mr. Park wouldn't vote on it, Mr. Trubus wouldn't vote on it. And I'd like to know why, all of a sudden, now, it can be voted on. Now, now, they actually see that things need to be done, or they don't have to use it as a bargaining chip for some other action that they're wanting, all right? And in the September meeting, I did see the part of my comments in September 13th meeting, I commented and complimented the, I said court, and I meant to say, active administrator Carol McGraw. And I said clerk by mistake. So I just want to correct the record that I did not mean the clerk, because there was no clerk at that time, all right? Because this is the clerk that I was complimenting. And we never had problems with notice or agendas when she was acting as active administrator. So since she's gone, they're taking it down the toilet again. Thank you.
It was not as far as asked to be.
I didn't agree on this. I did not get any of the community, excuse me, I did not get any of the communications. I asked for the emails. I asked for other things. They had first one. I never got them. You couldn't get it to me because Mr. Trubus was on vacation. I never got anything in that. But I didn't get it. I was promised.
It's okay. Can you just take the, um, anybody else?
I do. Over here, I'm not on the phone, but I'm on the couch or something. So Mrs. Luciano, please, you know, can you make it clear that you're a councilwoman? And you know, just as well as we do, that the opers is processed.
I know the process is.
And so, you can't just necessarily blame Ms. Gorges or our acting administrator, because those opers that you work, the multiple, multiple requests of opers that are made has to go through a process that you're aware of. It has to be found. It has to be given to the attorney. And it has to be given to the clerk.
I know the process is in Seattle. But I got a response from the attorney.
Can I please speak? So you know that there's a process. So to sit here and say and blame two people that, in my opinion, they have a least amount of control over it. They might be the ones that are ultimately responsible, but as with everything, and that I've experienced myself as a councilman, even when Mr. Bernstein was the attorney, that Mr. Bernstein would hold things up. And outside of those times, of the timeframe of Oprah, the one who gets the lawsuit is the clerk. And then they're found guilty for violating Oprah. And you know what? They had nothing to do with it, okay? So we could sit up here and wave that flag like we did with our last, our, actually, our present government, that they didn't, there was alleged cases that they were found guilty of Oprah violations. But you know what? Ninety-nine percent of it had nothing to do with them. So I take offense that people are pointing their fingers at our present acting Borough administrator and our new Borough clerk, or our deputy Borough clerk. And to go further with the reason why we're having problems with the Capitol, just one of our former employees, that you love so much, refuses to assist us with it, okay? So maybe you should think about that a little bit, about how great they are, but now, they won't assist us at all with getting what you would like to see online. So Councilman Deverorio, even though there's no requirement for us to make videos, has been doing his best to try to keep the public informed. And I also take offense that you think that he or anyone else cut off the video, but he's telling you that the video stopped. And you can look to try about it, and you can look any way you want, that, you know what? We're doing something, a conspiracy. But you know what? We don't have to put the videos on. And David has been trying to do the best he can to help us while our ex-employee won't assist us with anything. And because they were running the Borough with our esteemed mayor and not sharing any information with anybody, that's why we're in the position we're in. And as far as the Capitol, the reason why that we went to the Capitol that we're doing now is because our administrator has identified.
And around and around we go, okay? Enough. Enough, really. This is the public session. Around and around we go. This is all you do. Okay, enough. Anybody else on the public portion of the hour?
We have a serious issue with our folks.
I have a motion to close the public portion.
In addition, and I have to respond, in addition to, I thank Mr. Councilman Deverorio.
All in favor of the public portion?
All, excuse me, I have something to say.
All right, okay. Public portion is closed.
No, not closed.
Enough, enough. You guys have a problem.
So I get, I hope.
Transitioning from campaigning to governor. You can't just go after people all the time. Be productive. Be disruptive. Okay? You don't want to hear your story. You don't want to hear your story, please. Please, we don't have time. Round and round it goes. Okay. Next, Congress, here's the introduction of ordinance.
I received from Warren Eastwood, the certified board of education.
Oh, here we go.
Received from Warren Eastwood.
Are you going to speak as a president? Public portion is closed. Enough, really, David. Nobody wants to hear about your travails. We've all been through a lot with this council and governing body. Enough. Next up, next up is ordinance 21-23.
An ordinance, an open request was put into my personal, into my personal employment.
This is an introduction.
And also, the mayor has.
Mr. Deverorio, control yourself. We have a meeting tomorrow. We don't care about your life. We don't care about your employment.
To take a picture.
We really don't care.
And tell me the reason.
We really don't care. Okay.
So that's the gratitude.
We are doing.
My own personal equipment to record these meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Deverorio. And at the, self-professed videographer, you didn't, you didn't own that video.
What's wrong with this government is that it is a successful intent. And trying to get at people.
All right, 21-23. Mr. Deverorio. Mr. Deverorio, nobody cares about you, Mr. Deverorio. We are here for business.
Is the part of humanity and goodwill we need to have.
Mr. Deverorio, you speak about humanity and goodwill. You are the last human being that will extend any goodwill to anyone.
To our neighbors.
Will you just stop? We are doing business here.
We cannot sue our neighbors. We cannot be suing the Borough.
Oh, you position out, but you can't take it. Is that what you're saying? Oh, is that what you're saying? Enough, enough.
I would like to make it clear.
You guys, it's all outside. I live so far.
Goodwill.
But do not waste our time.
Is stronger than what we have, what we're listening to.
Do not waste our time, Mr. Deverorio. Nobody cares.
We must get.
Nobody cares, Mr. Deverorio.
And we must clean up our streets. We must pay attention. We heard about dog parks. We've got all kinds of requests in this community. We must address the community.
There's a motion pending. There's a motion pending, all in favor of reducing 21-23.
In attacking it. And it's got to stop. It has got to stop.
Councilmember Farrell. Councilmember Deverorio.
And we have discussion on it first before.
Discussion, we have a discussion. Thank you.
No one called the question.
Nobody asked for discussion. Nobody asked for discussion.
That's normally how it goes.
Mr. Deverorio, how do you vote? Yes or no?
Are you pointing at me?
Yes, cap order, yes or no?
In discussion.
Yes or no?
Are you pointing at me?
I am asking you.
We are doing.
No, no, you used up discussion on your nonsense, okay? We're voting. These people have been here for hours, okay? Let's go.
Councilmember Deverorio.
I'd like discussion about this Capitol ordinance. So can we have some discussion?
Councilwoman Chiano.
Is there going to be a discussion on this or no?
Nobody asked for discussion. We're voting.
I know you don't like.
No, no, but we already started voting. But you were too busy listening to your friend here.
Robert Tullis of Order, call for a motion, a second, and discussion. Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I didn't hear, with the council choosing to vote, you made the motion. I didn't know if you called the question, I never voted. The question, Councilman Trubus, is, did you, did you call the question and vote, or is it a discussion?
Well, the mayor has to call a motion, second, discussion.
We had a motion, a second, and there was no one asking for a discussion.
You didn't call for it.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter. We can't speak over him. You were listening to him. You weren't listening to me, right, mister? Sorry.
No, I think you were out of order.
No, no, I wasn't out of order.
You never had order.
Please. All right, let's finish. Let's finish the poll.
So, so, the, there was a, it's introduced, it's a motion, a second, introduce it. The question that is currently here is whether or not, certain two councilmen have asked for discussion, okay? There can be discussion, or two members of council can call the question and call for a vote. So that's.
We were in the middle of a vote.
Because you didn't call for discussion.
So let's have a discussion. You want a discussion? Would you like a discussion, Mr. Deverorio? On this subject only? Not about your personal travails, or how badly you feel about things, or your goodwill? Whatever you want, Mr. Deverorio, go ahead. Discuss the Capitol ordinance. We've been trying to pass this since last February. Go ahead. Is there anything you would like to say? Go ahead, ask him what you should say. Go ahead, Mr. Deverorio. Mr. Luciano, can you help him out, please? He's not sure.
You really are ridiculous.
Go ahead, okay. So this is our discussion, okay? We stop voting for this, okay?
Don't say what we're doing. I asked for a discussion, that's all.
It's a clown car.
And you're driving it. You're the only clown in.
I would like to let the public know what the Capitol ordinance will be covering. As I understand it, if I could ask, Ms. Thompson Chin could perhaps comment on what they will be purchasing for the Borough. Would you mind?
The ordinance is a capital project that was approved in the capital budget from 2021. This is an ordinance for a specific line related to communications. So it includes computer equipment for the use of the Borough Hall departments and the police department. I think it'll need information about each. It also includes a new telephone system, where the Borough had a U-911 system. The issue that the Borough has experienced lately is basically outdated, outdated, which is breaking down on a daily basis. And we've gotten to the point where we can't even get minor repairs in it. And we know that at present time, really difficult to even make a call into the Borough. Under the current circumstances, we probably would have waited until the new year, but fortunately, we had a special meeting, and we tried to take advantage of the timing. And we were assisted through a busy process by the CFO and our bond counselor. And all the documentation that had been included. So with regard to the computers, we are purchasing 26 computers, 15 for the police department, 11 for Borough Hall. The problem that we have right now is that these computers, not only is the equipment outdated, but the software that is running the computers is based on Microsoft's 7 combo system. And as you know, we're now at the 13th. It's hindering our ability because we don't have modern computer applications. So we can't use X on our computers at present time. And a lot of the services that we physically purchase or order are all now being supplied electrically. And our computers are not compatible with the modern applications. So this is an emergency. With regard to the 911 system, same thing. It's, I am, my understanding is that replacing the system has been under discussion for a long time, but it was finally authorized this year. And it is going to be done over a three-year period. But this initial outlay will allow us to set up the system and get it operating, and then it will be upgraded on a regular basis. With regard to the telephones, as I said, try calling it to Borough Hall in these days. So we're in a situation where we can't even get these phones repaired. They need to be replaced. The vendor for the 911 system, the company called Spoke, S-P-O-K-E. The vendor for the telephone system is Verizon. And what we're doing is making sure that the two systems can talk to each other. So all of our planning meetings, all of our coordination meetings include representatives from Borough, from Spoke, and Verizon to make sure that we have a fully integrated brand-new voice-over IP telephone system. I think we're getting a lot of value for, I think, the birdies and the expenditure and everything.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson Chin. By the way, folks, that's exactly the same speech that a prior Borough administrator gave us, along with, let me finish. Mr. Deverorio, I have the floor. Our police chief also gave us the same speech in February. So this has been going on. So don't think this is something new. This has been going on since February. And the council didn't do anything about it. And now it's an emergency. Thank Ms. Thompson Chin for shepherding this process through. And we need to get this done. Is there any other discussion? What would you like to say, Mr. Luciano? Go ahead, Mr. Luciano.
What would you like to say? I would like to know that, you know, I keep talking about this Capitol budget that came about from months ago. I think Councilman Trubus will sit there and not say anything, but I think you agree that the reason why the Capitol budget is falling down is because we felt that there was significant money in the Capitol budget that we had in the operating budget that could have been used without bonding for. So we keep hearing from our mayor how, you know, this is exactly what was done by our Borough administrator, but if you look at this value of this Capitol ordinance, it's $125,000, not $1,007,000. So there's a significant difference between the Capitol ordinance that His Majesty says that, you know, it's the same one that came from the beginning of the year.
Always with the name calling.
Because it's really not.
Always with the name calling.
You're always with the.
Is unable to actually completely follow without.
Did I say? I know, because, as you tell them, as you told me in the first session, I'm the dumb sort here, so.
No, actually, you said that yourself. And we agree.
Right, absolutely. So there's a significant difference in the Capitol ordinance. And this is something that came about because of the fact that we couldn't agree on the amount that should have been in the original Capitol ordinance. And the stuff that was in there, like lights on fields that we don't own, a few hundred thousand dollars, improvements to the field of over a million dollars that we thought could have been paid out of operating, that was trying to be, no discussion, but ran down our throat. And just like us right now, wanting to have discussion, had someone informed you, and us, what was actually in this $125,000? I think it's a pretty good thing, not only for the council, that the mayor doesn't really want us to be informed, he doesn't even want you to be informed. So thank you very much for tolerating me for a minute and a half.
I would also like to thank Ms. Thompson Chin for a very thorough report. I think that the public is owed an explanation, a thorough explanation of what the expenditures are going to be. So I really appreciate Ms. Thompson Chin being here, bringing her experience to the municipality, and look forward to all more good things happening on behalf of all the residents in town. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to add?
Councilman Deverorio?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chiano?
Hi.
Councilman President Trubus?
Yes.
Councilman Farrell, we're going into Capitol. We voted out.
He did, he did, but we had discussions. We started over.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion. This is for the adoption of ordinance 21-22. This is an ordinance amending section 2-20, fleshing in the discipline for disappointment. So we need to open to the public. I have a motion to open to the public. Only for purposes of this ordinance 21-22. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Anybody opposed? I didn't hear Mr. Luciano Deverorio anyway. How do you vote? I can tell them whatever I want.
What are you doing?
No, actually, I don't. This is your job. I'm asking you to vote if you want to open to the public. You have to say yes, no, recuse, abstain.
Yes.
Mr. Deverorio, have you decided what you want to do?
Make sure you have voted.
Yes, no, abstain, recuse. We're opening to the public. You look, we voted. Are you okay? We voted and asked, and I didn't hear a vote from you. I didn't hear a yes or a no, or a recuse or abstain.
Open to the public, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. So if anyone from the public wishes to be heard, just on this motion, ordinance rather, 21-22, if that could raise your hand, yes. You can stay seated if you wish.
Okay. Mary O'Shea, 12, we have a good. I have a couple of questions on this. I'm a little bit, I like clarification regarding the term of three years. Being the deputy clerk started and served four months previously, and I know there's words in there, Mr. Munch, about retroactive. And would her three-year term start from the first day of her initial employment with the Borough?
I'm not sure what you're asking. The language that's being changed here, as we read the tables, public has it, deputies will virtually be appointed for a three-year term commencing upon appointment, and shall serve until his or her successor falls asleep. And that's the language that's being amended.
Right, and then it says, in section two, the ordinance shall be given retroactive effective to allow for an individual already appointed as deputy to be afforded a three-year term provided, in this ordinance explicitly provided for in the appointing resolution.
Does the appointment, does the appointment run from the appointment initially or from the reappointment?
No, I think it, I think it runs from the time of appointment, not retroactive.
It says retroactive. The ordinance is given retroactive.
Well, I think, the way I read this is that deputy clerk is already appointed, right? I mean, she's, she's sitting here right now as appointed deputy clerk, right? But this ordinance is not yet passed. So if it passes, it would be retroactive until from when deputy clerk was appointed, which was two meetings ago, or.
But does the, does her time when she was hired previously and then resigned without notice, and she had three and a half, four months, or something like that, does that count in the three years?
That's not how I read the ordinance.
Is this, is this a tenured position?
Deputy clerk?
Yes.
I don't know if it's tenured. I don't recall.
Well, I mean, if it is a tenured position, would she automatically get tenure with this, with this, with this ordinance because of the four months and then three years? She'd have more than three years in position.
The ordinance, as I read it, is from three-year target approved, commencing from the time of deputy first employment, which was two meetings ago. That's, I, I, that's the ordinance.
And you're saying that it's not a tenured position?
I, I'm not making it seem like I'm overdoing it, I don't know. But the public had it.
Well, I think, I think that the council has to know that question, the answer to that question before you vote on this ordinance. Because basically, if it is a tenured position, and if her previous three or four months service count, you're automatically giving this person lifetime tenure in position. And I think that you have to be very careful in doing something like that. Most of the positions in the Borough are yearly positions. All the administrative positions through all the different ranks are yearly positions. You're giving this person three years, and she has four months possibly, or somewhere around that, from the previous time when she was here before she quit. And I, I think that you need to get the answer to that before you vote on this.
Mr. Munch, how do you advise?
Well, I don't, I don't actually, Ms. Sheehan, I don't believe this is a tenured position, but I don't have the ordinance approved in front of me, so.
Does it matter for the mayor?
That's up to the council. I don't believe so. As I've already said, the four years that Ms. Sheehan mentioned, the four months that Ms. Sheehan mentioned, I don't believe is any factor into future appointment. This is a one for three years, commencing upon, retroactive to when this person's appointed[1799.12] First of all, we have a missing bill of $303,000 from Cadwalader that may state probably a lot of whiskey going on. Mayor Kranjak has been the sole person to communicate with Cadwalader. He has, he's told me, he told the council that Karen Geier is a friend. They are a New York City law firm, and they do not, they are not authorized to do work in New Jersey, and they've been denied three times by the courts. We have, are up to probably an estimate of $1 million that we are owed, that we owe them. We are basically flushing the money down the river, or the toilet, whatever these are, shoes. And this is bad money after bad money going to a law firm that is a friend of, a New York City law firm that cannot practice in New Jersey, that is a friend of Mario Krantak. I find that abhorrent. I find that as being totally mismanaging the taxpayers' money, sitting on the bill of $303,000, and incidentally, also sitting on the letter of recommendation, a letter of resignation by our CFO. Our CFO resigned on November 1st. We didn't know about it until a few hours ago, or maybe at most 12 hours ago. That is abhorrent. You have a mayor that's not sane, not transparent, not saying what's going on to the public.
Have you finished?
And sitting... No, I'm not finished. I'm not finished.
Okay, does that like to respond to all your cognitive impairments there? That's a name, let's just characterize it as speech.
Furthermore...
Go ahead.
Furthermore...
Keep making it up, David.
Furthermore, this, I hope that this council will not vote to approve any of this, because what's going to happen...
Your friends will get mad at you.
What is going to happen, what will happen, and there's a real stark possibility that we will end up in a worse situation. We have experienced that, if you recall, once before, at that big meeting at the Upper School. The settlement MOU is for 400 units, less overlays on, and then it got worse. Every time Mario Kranjak drums, gets his fists, and drums them on his chest, the situation gets even worse. Do not be surprised in our lovely town of Edward Grifves, who have multiple unit dwellings on wood, on rubbers, high-density housing in your backyards. You want your property values to stay up, then you're gonna have to. Nobody likes 450 units, but it was largely Mario Kranjak, probably wholly Mario Kranjak that has gotten us into this very bad situation. But you know what? You have a choice. You can either adjust to it, nobody likes it. It's not in our residential community, it's not in there, it's not in the vacant land that's in there. There was a developer, there was a builder, someone came to him when we lost our immunity, he bought the 24 units up in the residential area. So that is what is at risk here. This is motivated by vengeance, by faith-saving, by cronyism of law firms in New York City that he knows that can't do a damn thing for us, and it's only gonna make the situation worse. So I would ask that you very seriously consider that. Our Korean friends, yes, I realize, I know that Mr. Park has the answer to them in large part, and they respect him, and I want, I want Mr. Park to make the right decision. And if he, if he, if he agrees with this, and...
Fear mongering or what?
If he agrees with this, our whole values could go down, and our taxes could skyrocket. Who's gonna pay, who's going to pay for this?
Permit me to respond. So Cadwalader is a very, very good law firm, which just scares the hell out of every law firm in New Jersey, as in our bullseye, right, Marty?
Right.
And as Nick Nirvante said in the Bergen Record, I wouldn't want to litigate against them either, which you see, because everybody is kind of trying to circle their wagons, because they know a affordable housing scam is a scam in New Jersey. I've always said, it's the law, we will comply, we'll comply to our own terms, okay? The other thing is, in terms of bills, look, I'm not a secretary, no one should be sending me any bills. If I get them, I send them to Jules at the Tennessee...
Oh, come here, you're an angel.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. People send them to Jules. So now, I am also...
Make a comment on that, because he's a liar.
Right. Also, also... With the name calling, please stop. Let me finish. I'm gonna rebut, I'm gonna rebut. I let you go, but then you are... Now you keep your mouth shut while I speak. Do you hear me?
Excuse me?
Okay. In terms of leaving the sole person speaking to Cadwalader, not true.
Yes, true.
Not true, absolutely not true. Mr. Trubus, Mr. Park have been on the phone.
Who authorized them to move forward?
Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. As you circle the drain, I will save this town, okay?
Authorized them.
Okay, let me finish, let me finish.
Don't be married, let him finish.
I let him finish, and he basically drivel, okay? So let's clean up this record. Okay, in terms of the resignation of the CFO, I believe Ms. Thompson Shin and I found out at the same time by an email, and I think you actually circulated it to everybody on council as well. So we can't make you read your emails, okay? We can't do that for you. And that was earlier in the month, okay? And in terms of fear mongering, I think David's worried that he might lose that apartment that's probably circled for him at 800 Silvan, right? I mean, that's kind of where I'm feeling, but at the end of the day, I don't want to have people segregated off to one side. Everybody should be part of our community. So I know you take great solace in the fact that they're gonna be on the highway. I don't. Everybody should live in a community, not on a highway. And that's where 800 Silvan and the lawyer in the back get it wrong. And Marty, while you're here, while you're here, there's a lot of emails that we are looking for, from your law firm to our former law firm. And so, since you're here and you're so interested in this, will you commit to sending me all the emails that you exchanged with the lawyers that we are now suing, who haven't given us those emails? Will you commit to that, sir?
You have the...
Let me finish, let him answer, let him answer. Mr.?
Will you?
Mr.?
Can you tell everybody how you had a letter?
Hold on a second, let him answer, let him answer.
Tell everybody that you lied?
Look, it's defending you, Marty.
You're not defending him at all.
You are defending the lawyer for 800 Silvan. Marty, I asked you a question. Will you give me all the emails between your law firm and the law firms that we are suing? You're standing there, you're very interested in the outcome here. Will you give them to us? Yes or no?
Does he put this on the record, Mr. Kranjak? He represented by council? You have to direct audio communications to me by phone.
Ah, I thought you'd say that.
He has your attorney right there.
Well, Mr. Mensch, would you go outside with Marty?
Marty.
He's a big fan of him, and speak to him about the emails, and ask him, please. Go ahead, do it. Oh, wait, oh, wait. Marty, go ahead with Mr. Mensch. Go outside, have a discussion, and come back. You want to speak to council? He's right here. Go ahead.
The mayor, the council, I don't represent the borough on this issue, so I'm not having a conversation with council sometimes, but certainly...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. It doesn't matter. We're trying to get information. Matt, come on, go out and speak to him. In front of the public here, we are asking for records that we don't have, that you have. You're our attorney. Go out, talk to each other.
The mayor, I don't represent the council.
Doesn't matter.
You would have them all over.
Could the council please authorize Mr. Mensch to go outside and speak to Marty?
No.
No.
Why not?
You have them in emails.
We don't have the emails from lawyer to lawyer.
If you're willing to tell us...
So Marty, you see where this is heading?
If you're willing to tell us about the letter that you got from...
Marty, you see where this is heading?
That you had a Dropbox with all the emails that you told everybody for a year or two years.
We don't have all the emails. We do not have all the emails.
Did you have a Dropbox? Did you have a Dropbox from Cameron with all the emails?
Yes.
Tell everybody.
Yes, I do.
I'll show everybody the email.
Okay. Marty, you're changing something. You're changing something, and it's really nice. You are protecting the developer's lawyer.
I have the emails for a very long time.
You are protecting the developer's lawyer.
I'm an IT person.
All right. You are protecting him. Look at that. Look at that. Marty, you look very uncomfortable. We want your emails. We want your emails. We're gonna get them, Marty.
This confrontational approach...
All right. Does anybody else have discussion?
You are missing the confrontational approach that the mayor...
Does anyone else have discussion regarding the resolution that Mr. Mensch just read?
You just went off on a tangent with the attorney.
No, no, it's related. It's related, I was defending myself against your guidance.
And don't put a timeline on me, like, we don't put a timeline on the public.
You're the one who wanted to time this off.
You forgot that. So if I can say about Cadwalader, okay?
Go ahead, say it.
If you let people talk instead of being intentional and interrupting their talk, this is great, with a little smirky smile, okay? So Cadwalader, I think when you guys wrote on this tonight, there's very many open-ended items in this resolution, when they agree to a new rate, if they agree to a new rate, but you know what? For months, we have a transcript here from July 14th that a councilman said that this term cannot move forward without coming back to the council. They could not do one item of work without coming back to the council. That's what they were hired for, as on paper, to represent us with no work without coming back to the council, to this very day. What is going to happen, what will happen in this state real stark possibility, that we will end up in a worse situation. We have experienced that, if you recall, once before at that big meeting at the upper school. The settlement M O U is for 400 units, less overlays on. And then it got worse. Every time Mario Kranjak drums, gets his fists and drums them on his chest, the situation gets even worse. Do not be surprised in our lovely town of Edward Grifves who have multiple unit dwellings on wood, on rubbers, high-density housing in your backyards. You want your property values to stay up? Then you're gonna have to, nobody likes 450 units. But it was largely Mario Kranjak, probably wholly Mario Kranjak that has gotten us into this very bad situation. But you know what? You have a choice. You can either adjust to it, nobody likes it. It's not in our residential community, it's not in there, it's not in the vacant land that's in there. There was a developer, there was a builder, someone came to him when we've lost our immunity. He wanted 24 units up in the residential area. So that is what is at risk here. This is motivated by vengeance, by faith-saving, by cronyism of law firms in New York City that he knows that can't do a damn thing for us and it's only gonna make the situation worse. So I would ask that you very seriously consider that. Our Korean friends, yes, I realize, I know that Mr. Park has, has the answer to them in large part and they respect him. And I want, I want Mr. Park to make the right decision and if he, if he, if he agrees with this and I, I.
That fear mongering or what?
If he agrees with this, our home values could go down and our taxes could skyrocket. Who's gonna pay, who's going to pay for this?
Permit me, permit me to respond. So Cadwalader is a very, very good law firm which just scares the hell out of every law firm in New Jersey as in our bullseye, right Marty?
Right.
And as Nick Nirvane said in the Bergen Record, I wouldn't want to litigate against them either. Which you see, because everybody is kind of trying to circle their wagons because they know affordable housing scam is a scam in New Jersey. I've always said, it's the law, we will comply, we'll comply to our own terms, okay? The other thing is in terms of bills, look, I'm not a secretary, no one should be sending me any bills. If I get them, I send them to Jules at the Tennessee.
Oh, come here.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, people send them to bills? So now, now, I am also, hold on a second.
Because he's a liar.
Also, also. And put the name calling, please stop, let me finish, I'm gonna rebut, I'm gonna rebut. I let you go with the new lawyer. Now you keep your mouth shut while I speak, do you hear me?
Excuse me?
Okay. In terms of leaving the sole person speaking to Cadwalader, not true.
Yes, true.
Not true, absolutely not true. Mr. Seaboois, Mr. Park.
Who authorized them to move on?
Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. As you circle the drain, I will say in this town, okay?
Authorized them.
Okay, let me finish, let me finish. I let him finish and he basically dribbled, okay? So let's clean up this record. Okay, in terms of the resignation of the CFO, I believe, uh, this Thompson Shin and I found out at the same time by an email and I think you actually circulated it to everybody on council as well. So we can't make you read your emails, okay? We can't do that for you. And that was earlier in the month, okay? And in, in terms of fear mongering, I, I think David's worried that he might lose that apartment that's probably circled for him at 800 Sullivan, right? I mean, that's kind of where I'm feeling, uh, but at the end of the day, I don't want to have people like segregated off to one side, everybody should be part of our community. So I know you, you take great solace in the fact that they're gonna be on the highway, I don't. Everybody should live in a community, not on a highway. And that's where 800 Sullivan and the lawyer in the back get it wrong. And Marty, while you're here, while you're here, there's a lot of emails that we are looking for from your law firm to our former law firm. And so, since you're here and you're so interested in this, will you commit to sending me all the emails that you exchanged with the lawyers that we are now suing who haven't given us those emails? Will you commit to that sir?
You have the.
Let me finish, let him answer, let him answer. Mister, Mister.
Can you tell everybody how you had a letter?
Hold on a second, hold on, let, let him answer, let him answer.
Everybody that you lied?
Look, look, I'm defending you Marty, isn't that beautiful? You are defending the lawyer for 800 Sullivan. Marty, I asked you a question, will you give me all the emails between your law firm and the law firms that we are suing? You're standing there, you're very interested in the outcome here, will you give them to us? Yes or no?
Does he put this on the record, Mr. Kranjak? You're represented by counsel, you have to direct audio communications to me by phone.
Ah, I thought you'd say that.
He doesn't care about that. Ask your attorney right there.
Well, well, Mr. Mensch, would you go outside with, with Marty? He's a big fan of him and speak to him about the emails and ask him, please, go ahead, do it. Well, wait, well, wait, Marty, go ahead with Mr. Mensch. Go outside, have a discussion, come back. You want to speak to counsel, he's right here, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Mensch.
The mayor, uh, the council, I don't represent the borough on this issue, so I'm not having a conversation with council. At times, but certainly.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, it doesn't matter, we're trying to get information, Matt, come on. Go out and speak to him. In front of the public here, we are asking for records that we don't have, that you have. You're our attorney, go out, talk to each other.
I understand, the mayor, I don't represent the council.
Doesn't matter.
You would have them all over.
Could the council please authorize Mr. Mensch to go outside and speak to Marty?
No.
No.
Why not?
You have them in emails.
We, we don't have the emails from lawyer to lawyer.
If you're willing to tell us.
So Marty, you see where this is heading?
If you're willing to tell us about the letter that you got from.
Marty, you see where this is heading?
That you had a Dropbox with all the emails that you told everybody for a year or two years.
We don't have all the emails, we do not have all the emails.
Did you have a Dropbox? Did you have a Dropbox from Cameron with all the emails?
Yes.
Tell everybody.
Yes.
I'll show everybody the email.
Marty, you're changing something.
I'll show you the email.
You're changing something and it's really nice, you are protecting the developer's lawyer.
I have the emails for a very long time.
You're protecting the developer's lawyer.
I'm an IT person. I'm not, I'm not protecting.
All right, you are protecting him, look at that. Look at that, Marty, you look very uncomfortable, we want your emails. We want your emails, we're gonna get them Marty.
This confrontational approach.
Does anybody else have discussion?
You are missing the confrontational approach that mayor.
Does anyone else have discussion?
That has got us into this situation on the first.
Regarding the resolution that Mr. Mensch just read.
You just went off on a tangent with the attorney.
No, no, it's related, it's related, I was defending myself against your guidance.
And don't put a timeline on me like you, we don't put a timeline on the public.
You're the one who wanted a timeline.
You brought us off, okay?
You forgot that.
So if I can say about Cadwalader, okay?
Go ahead, say it.
He's, if you let people talk instead of being intentional and interrupting their talk, this is great, with a little smirky smile, okay? Um, so Cadwalader, I think when you guys wrote on this tonight, there's very many open-ended items in this resolution, when they agree to a new rate, if they agree to a new rate, but you know what? For months, we have a transcript here from July 14th that a councilman said that this firm cannot move forward without coming back to the council. They could not do one item of work without coming back to the council. That's what they were hired for as on paper to represent us with no work without coming back to the council. To this very day, to this very second, they have never, ever come back to the council with any, any request, any request for permission to do anything and they've run up a million dollars worth of bills. And if anybody wants to see the bills, the only ones that have spoken to them is our prior borough administrator and our mayor, okay?
Not true.
So I'll show you the bill.
The bill, we'll show the.
That's not true, so you have to stop lying though.
So I want to say.
You really have to stop lying, you really have to stop lying.
You're the only liar, here we go.
I am not the only person who's wrong with Bill. And by the way.
He wants everybody to wait while he.
I am not gonna let you lie.
And we're not gonna let you talk.
No, no, no.
The only thing is lie when you talk, okay?
And by the way, Cadwalader is well within their budget, they are well within their budget.
What's their budget?
They're well within their budget.
What's their budget?
That is litigation strategy. You have, you have a potential adversary right there, we're not gonna talk about the budget.
The budget was a hundred thousand dollars. You took a straw poll to switch council, which is in a lawsuit right now.
Phase one.
That we never voted on.
Phase one was a hundred.
That we never voted on.
Phase one was a hundred thousand. No, you're lying. Phase one was a hundred thousand dollars.
Anybody that wants to see it, I'll show it to you, okay? You can, it's, if there's a lawsuit out there, there was never approval of anything but a hundred thousand dollars not to exceed with the caveat that they come back to the council before they do any work.
Correct.
They're up to a million dollars with the only approval coming from our esteemed mayor. Never advising us.
That was a draw from August 11th.
Straw poll, keep saying that because I love that in the transcript. Draw, straw polls are not by, that's why right now.
They won.
We're ratifying, okay? And my point to my fellow council members is when you ratify it and they don't accept the, the rate that you guys want to propose to them, you know what they're gonna do? They're gonna run to court and say, you know what? You ratified this even though we didn't.
You're confusing two different concepts.
Our attorney said.
No, no, you're confusing two different concepts.
Last Friday, they told them not to.
The work that was done and gets negotiated.
Any more work last Friday without contacting him so that he can advise us. And on Monday, they filed an appeal.
Because they had to.
Because they had to, we're gonna find out that's not true.
I know you and David don't want them appealing.
That's not true either and you will find out that, okay? That that was not true and he lies.
What were you guys promised?
So what I'm talking to my fellow council members is that, you know what? When you ratify their million-dollar bill and they refuse to move on their hourly rate, they're gonna come back and they're gonna say to you, you ratified my bill at 1,200.
No, you're misstating it, you're ratifying the what, not the bill.
I'm not gonna move at all because you're ratifying. That this gentleman right here, which is a kind word to call him a gentleman, that he wants you to ratify all the things that they did without our authorization.
They ratified.
One hundred thousand, it's up to a million and never one time came to this council to ask for permission to do anything.
They did a fantastic job.
They were hired.
Would you want us to hire them?
An investigation, an investigation is what they were, that motion that they hired them on not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars was to do an investigation. Had nothing to do with affordable housing that they've lost three times that they can't represent us. Okay, and tomorrow, they're gonna lose again, okay, that they can't represent us.
Is there a, is there a.
And my question to you, just remember, you want to go and sue up, but you don't go up anywhere else. So stand in line for the mic, eat the mic, eat the mic.
You're getting, not only are you repetitive, but you're repetitive.
Eat the mic.
It's amazing to me how much this mayor is defending his friend in the city and he said, and you can look at the notes.
They did a great job David.
It's his friend.
They did a great job.
They probably both work in the city and it's his, his friend, he has told us that as a council. I find it abhorrent that he.
Really? What else do you find that abhorrent? Do you find that abhorrent paying out much as 200,000 dollars?
That he is getting away with this and I, you know, if, if this goes and if this gets passed and I will say this, and I will say this. Mayor Kranjak will own this. Mayor Kranjak will own this and let him own this.
That's fine, I will own it, I will own it, I will own everything because you know what? I'm being driven by helping the residents, not by helping a political party like you are, okay? That's the difference between you and me, you do whatever they want you to do.
The only one you're trying to help is yourself, you can keep going.
Is there any other, is there any other?
You don't have to look good because you're a guy, you're a liar.
Is there, yeah, I know, name calling again, of course, is there any other discussion?
You're breaking the law and you have.
Really? You're a lawyer now, you're a lawyer now also. You can't even run a video camera without cutting it into two parts and losing some shades of comments, right? Right? You're a self-professed videographer, but you can't do that, right? Nothing enough.
It is the law to have.
Is there any other discussion we need to vote? All right, there's no other discussion, can we please have a vote on the resolution? On the resolution? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the public session closed, I'm sorry.
Motion to open to the public.
Sorry, you can't speak now, okay?
Motion to open to the public.
No, we're not doing it.
Discussion.
Wait, we're in the middle of a.
Motion to open to the public, second, take a vote, Ms. Borchus, please.
Make sure this, you want to open to the public again, they had a chance to speak.
Do you want to open to the public now? Because it's not your friends?
There was a motion, they said to open to the public, the council has to vote on it, but you want to allow the public to comment on this, I certainly, it's in the council's, uh, obstruction of.
I am quite sure Mr. Kranjak does not want the.
I really don't care if the public speaks or not because we, we are going to get through this, eventually we'll vote.
Well, eventually, it would certainly be, uh, out of the ordinary in any instance for a vote when the council opens to public in the middle of special individual items, but it certainly, uh, there's this motion and second, uh, the council should vote on opening to the public.
Let's have a roll call that opens to the public on this subject.
Councilman Park? Councilman Farrow? Councilman Igorgorio?
Yes.
Councilman Luciano?
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes.
Councilman Petruvis?
No. The motion fails. So we have a vote on the motion as read into the record by Borough Attorney Mensch and by, as. It's so moved, yes, it's so moved by Mr. Petruvis and as seconded previously by Mr. Park. Uh, we had discussion, now we're having a roll call, please do so.
Councilman Park? Councilman Farrow? Councilman Igorgorio?
No with the most emphasis possible.
Councilman Luciano?
Absolutely not.
Council President Petruvis?
Yes. My motion passes, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to terminate the contract with Cadwalader.
Second.
We just voted to rehire.
I just.
Is that, the motion is.
Thinkable.
Hold on a second, let me ask our lead opinion.
It's a legitimate motion.
All right.
You know how the law works? Now you don't really understand.
Well, I'm used to working online, you're not, so we might be here all night.
Yeah, we might be. But at least someone follows the law, unlike yourself.
Well, you're just being obstructionist, okay?
Can we take a vote?
I want to show the true color.
Your true colors, we've seen them all.
I want you to call the question.
A discussion, and I'd like to discuss this, Cadwalader.
We just discussed this. You just did, all right, I'm gonna ask the audience to shout him down now, go ahead, feel free. I really don't care.
I want to hear from the public, but now you want to hear from the public.
It's completely ridiculous.
That's funny.
You just, you just went through this David.
We can't hear from the public, now we want the public to yell us down.
Are you having a burden of feeling, David?
One simple statement, basically that, um, firing Cadwalader is the most conservative thing that could be done by this council. I am a Democrat, but I'm, uh, also very conservative. And in being conservative, I feel that this is prudent. This is money that's flushed down the toilet on behalf of Mayor Kranjak. He will own this, you will see.
That's fine, I own everything I do.
You will see what happens, but I do believe that this is a, a, a good vote. I think it should, they should be thrown out of this community. Thank you. You're gonna take a vote?
Okay, is there any other discussion from the council? Okay, so there's a, there's been a motion made to terminate Cadwalader, who the council just hired three minutes ago. Okay? Uh, can we have the vote now? This is, uh, Mr. Farrow, I want to make sure you, you understand what we're doing here. They, they made a motion to terminate Cadwalader. My recommendation is a no vote.
So you got your, you got your marching orders there, councilman?
Councilman Park? Councilman Farrow? Councilman Igorgorio?
Yes with the most emphasis.
That's immature, that's immature.
You're immature.
Councilman Luciano?
Yes, fire them.
Council President Petruvis?
Okay, come a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to terminate Stone and Magninidi.
Second.
Well, I think we have the minutes, Marty.
Second.
Well, no, he was trying to jump off it, but I made a motion and you have a second.
What's your motion now?
To terminate Stone and Magninidi.
Okay, well, if you guys want to play this game, then I will stay here all night.
Thank you.
Do you want to do that?
That's fine, call them on, please.
Oh no, there should be a discussion.
Okay, open if you want a motion, that's great.
You guys don't want discussion?
Absolutely.
So this, you want a discussion?
Motion, second discussion, that's what I'm at, George.
Yeah, I was speaking, I was speaking.
That's the way it goes.
I was speaking.
That's the way it goes.
I was speaking.
That's the way it goes.
All right, I was speaking.
That's the way it goes.
So, so they want to have a discussion on a motion determining Stone and Magninidi, who was just hired five minutes ago, okay?
You should go out and talk.
All right, let's, let's humor the morons amongst us.
Oh, mayday? Mayday.
Let's, let's humor them, let, let's have a, let's have a vote. Let's have a vote.
So, um, just to be clear to the public and, um, this, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilman Luciano, if you could, uh, help me out with this, this law firm is, uh, basically.
They are great.
It is based in New Jersey, correct, and they are, then they were.
This is the beard for Stone and.
They were never.
This is the beard for Stone and Magninidi that the council just approved.
Confused.
Ratified.
They're confused.
They were never hired.
Because they've been saying that they've been representing us for months.
You are woefully confused.
They never, never voted on them to represent us at all until tonight. So they've never been anybody to us and never, as a matter of fact, Cadwalader was never approved to become our Affordable Housing Council either, except in a straw poll, which isn't legal in New Jersey. That's why we're ratifying it tonight.
Exactly, so.
We already ratified it, we ratified it, now you want to terminate Stone and Magninidi. Just so you know, Stone and Magninidi has acted as local council for Cadwalader.
Never hired.
Very good lawyers.
Never hired.
And a boy show lawyer, they're very lawyers.
Never hired, never hired.
Okay, so is the discussion over or do you still have monopotific?
Oh, no, yes, I will.
Okay, no doubt.
Basically, and I will be critical of my Republican friends across the aisle, you have, you have actually given Mario Kranjak the biggest gift that'll blow up in his face. It will blow up in everyone's face and unfortunately, it will blow up in the whole community. So this is a big gift, he can pay his friends in New York City now, he's not gonna be laughed at in New York City. He might be, he might be yet, but his reputation, his reputation.
I told you, my reputation is great and I own everything I do.
I spoke with, I spoke with several people that attended the municipal, uh, convention. They all were like, this guy's a crazy man and I will confirm that he is crazy.
Wow, David went Atlantic City and is coming back with stories about what he did in Atlantic City. Isn't that exciting, everybody? This is what you're doing after.
This is the kind of reputation that our town, this is the kind of reputation that our town has, and as I said before, we have been so distracted by this question that we have done nothing for the residents in this community and it is a damn shame because you know.
What else did you do in Atlantic City?
We want to do good things for the residents, we want to move forward with renovations.
And everybody, that's why I don't go to the League of Municipalities, that's exactly why. Because you gotta talk to people, you gotta talk to people like me.
Mario Kranjak is, is really this town's greatest.
Oh, another kid, Mario Kranjak, keep hitting me, go ahead, what else?
He is the talk of the city, he likes that because he loves to be talked about.
Really? How does it relate to Stone and Magninidi?
It's hurting our town.
Really?
And it's a shame because our town's reputation has been tarnished.
Our town's reputation is awesome. But they're the only people staying in the office that are staying in New Jersey now.
And the.
So there's a motion to terminate Stone and Magninidi.
Putting everyone, just because of your ideology, you're putting everyone at this town, at risk because of your personal ideology, that's the truth.
Apparently a lot of people have their ideologies, they reelect me, okay? And I always told everybody what I wanted to do. Not like you, I didn't fake it, I didn't do the head fake.
Let me tell you.
Did you see what he ran, he said, I am against identity laws, right? Like, look at this, he's a moron, you know, I go out for drinks after this.
He's gonna take a thousand.
I already had it.
I like the river bomb, I'm just pissed, you know?
All right, so, uh, this is a vote to determine if Stone and Magninidi, the law firm that we just. We have a roll call for this.
Councilman Park? Councilman Farrow? Councilman Igorgorio?
Yes.
Councilman Luciano? Council President Petruvis?
Uh, actually, I don't know, we, we have to, we have to.
There were, there were, uh, I had, I had my notes that there were two, that there were two resolutions. Uh, while we were approving the minutes, uh, this was for February 10th, regular meeting, our third special meeting, our 10th regular meeting, April 26th special meeting, April 22nd closed session, April 24th special meeting, June 9th regular meeting, June 16th special meeting, and July 14th, uh, politics meeting.
Take a vote. Second, take a roll.
Councilman Park?
Yes, for.
Let us roll.
Councilman Farrow? Councilman Igorgorio?
No.
Councilman Luciano? Council President Petruvis?
Shut up, you're asking, you know, why not? Why not?
I don't, I don't have to answer any questions, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm done.
You can only ask us if you can answer, okay? So we, 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 we pass. Councilman Farrow, did you make a motion, Minister? Go to the second. I'm sorry.
Motion to terminate all bills.
You, you, uh, you had, uh, you wanted to do a resolution to point members of the council to approve the committee.
Oh, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm. Councilman Farrow's woman or, uh, sorry.
Motion to terminate all bills.
Hold on a second, Councilman, Councilman Petruvis had it before, okay? Councilman Petruvis had it before.
Motion to terminate all bills. Motion to terminate all...
Move the, uh... The, 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 the,